I'd like to call the City Council Caucus Meeting to order. We have two public hearings tonight, and then we'll move on to original consideration. If the clerk would read item number one.
Item number one, original consideration. An ordinance amending Chapter 210, Section 210-8, and Section 210-14, and Chapters 138, Section 138-40, and Section 138-81 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady relative to rental certificates.
This has been discussed in committee numerous times. Mr. Riggi, roll call. Okay. All right, item number two.
Item number two, an ordinance changing the zoning district for 1502 Crane Street to C2 mixed-use commercial, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing on April 22, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. at Council Chambers, Room 209, Schenectady City Hall, 105 J Street, Schenectady, New York.
This was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, an ordinance for the rezoning of part of 515 Kings Road from R1 single-family residential to R3 multifamily residential, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing held on Monday, April 22, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. at Council Chambers, Room 209, Schenectady City Hall, 105 J Street, Schenectady, New York.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution calling for a public hearing relative to the abandonment of streets in the Woodlawn Preserve to be held on Monday, April 22, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. at Council Chambers, Room 209, Schenectady City Hall, 105 J Street, Schenectady, New York.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, an ordinance amending the Schenectady City Code to include a provision for towing fees and fee schedules, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing held on Monday, April 22, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. at Council Chambers, Room 209, Schenectady City Hall, 105 J Street, Schenectady, New York.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. And needless to say, we may have a long meeting in two weeks with all the public hearings. Okay, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution appointing Mary DeAlessandro to the Board of Assessment Review.
All right, this is discussed in committee. Ms. Porterfield?
Yes, let's do the amendment right now. So, that would be changing when we approve this in committee, Ms. DeAlessandro was going to be on the Board of Assessment Review for a five-year term, so the amendment is to appoint her to the unexpired term, so her term would end then in September 30, 2014. Is there a second to the amendment? Okay, Mr. Erickson, thank you. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, so then we will deal with the actual resolution appointing her. Roll call vote, is that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, item number seven.
Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Riggi?
I got lost. The amendment, I'd like a roll call on this.
Yes, okay. Yeah. Okay, number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Coller City Auctions for the marketing and sale of certain real property owned by the City of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the transfer of title of 2104 Van Vranken Avenue consisting of parcel number SBL number 39.28-1-21.1 to Habitat for Humanity of Schenectady County.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution confirming the appointment of Randolph Magoo and Robin Granger to the Schenectady Civilian Police Review Board.
This was also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution approving a waiver of interest on fees owed to the City of Schenectady by Bethel AME Church.
Again, discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, Contract and Supply, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Northeast Turf Incorporated for the maintenance of the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. And then item 11A.
Item 11A, a resolution appointing Durham Hetal to the Board of Assessment Review.
And this would be with, Ms. Porterfield?
Yes, I'd like to offer to amend the decision.
Okay, so this would be changing his term to end on 9/30/2018. Yes, and this is by unanimous consent because we inadvertently had the wrong resume when we approved it in committee last week, so this is making a correction for that. So would somebody move this to the agenda? Okay, Ms. Porterfield, second by Ms. Perazzo, all in favor? Aye. And then move it on to the consent agenda? Okay, Ms. Porterfield, Ms. Perazzo, all in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus. I will declare this adjourned and move into the regular meeting, and ask you to rise for the invocation with Reverend Brad Jones with Christ Church.
Lord God, you have created us in your image to reflect your nature, so I pray your nature would be reflected in every discussion, in every decision, in every thought and word that takes place this evening. Let it be reflected in true charity and patience and love of one another in this place. For every decision that needs to be made, for every discussion that takes place, may we remember that each one, for every discussion of buildings, properties, dollars and cents, appointments, every one involves people, individuals, lives, who each interact with one another, so Lord, give wisdom and discernment to make good and just decisions as benefit the welfare of all the people of the city, and particularly for those impacted by the matters before business tonight. Lord be present here and guide the thoughts and words and actions of all concerned. Thus, we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
I'll ask Mark Chairs to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Perazzo.
Here.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Ms. Brucker.
Present.
Ms. King.
Present.
Ms. Blanchard is excused.
Mr. Erickson.
I'm here too.
Sorry.
All right, we have two public hearings tonight. The first is an ordinance to amend Chapter 165 to include the addition of new greens fee categories. Jason Plank is the only one who has signed up to speak to this.
City Council Mayor, we've been asking for the last four years to have persons with disabilities added into with the senior category. Also too, this is about four years ago, we had also had an agreement to bring the ID card that you need for the parks and wrecks from the main building because it's non-accessible up to the city clerk's office, and it still has not been done. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can be able to resolve that issue and bring the ID cards because when you need them for the golf course, persons with disabilities would not be able to access the main building because it's totally non-accessible, and a ramp would have cost almost about $10,000 to $12,000. So they opted for the lower cost by moving the ID cards over to the city clerk's office. So I'm hoping that both of these issues will be able to take care of with this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. As I said, I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and we'll move on to the second one, which is the 2013 Consolidated Plans Proposed Allocation of $2,801,248 in federal housing and urban development funding. Christopher Logue.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Chris Logue. I'm the Executive Director with Cornell Cooperative Extension in Schenectady County located on Knott Terrace. We have been a recipient of CDBG funds in the past. It's been a great funding source for us, and we certainly appreciate the city's generosity in the past. I'm not here tonight to speak in support of an application from our organization, but I am here to speak a little bit about the application from the Community Loan Fund for the Capital District. Establishment of a Schenectady satellite office for the Community Loan Fund for the Capital District will increase access to services of the Community Loan Fund, including small business loans, residential mortgages, home repair loans, as well as educational opportunities for our residents. The Community Loan Fund has a very strong record of lending in Schenectady County that has led to the creation of jobs, and we hope that establishment of an office here in Schenectady City will enable more of our residents to partake of their services. So I ask you to consider their application and to fund them if possible. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor, I have said for the last 10 years, the city needs to have an affirmative action plan for persons with disabilities and minorities that live in the city. The mayor and his staff has done appropriated the community loan block grant monies to ensure that persons with disabilities have a meaningful access to all programs, activities, and services of said grant. For the last six years, the city and the county have had a contract to handle the affirmative action services for which has not lived up to the contract requirements and have failed to assure equal access to these grants. The city still has not done an economic disparity study to help assure to access to jobs and to the federal state grants programs. The city has still not done an affordable and accessible plan for access to homes or rental units in the city, nor implemented procedures designed to fulfill the 1999 Supreme Court decision, the Homestead decision, to maximize community integration of persons with disabilities. The last year's city's 2013 budget resulted in significant changes to the community block grant funding without a public hearing on those in-house funds. A redrafting of the five-year plan needs to be done to address the reallocation by the city of these funds. Federal contracts that have been assured of access for both persons with disabilities and minorities for jobs. And our local papers confirmed that affirmative action managers failed to do her job in requiring that the contractors for the Erie Boulevard was meeting the affirmative action requirements for which over $13 million of federal money was used. A letter to the editor was sent into our local paper saying there was a need for accessible and affordable home modifications, i.e. ramps and widening of doors. As such, the city has not even looked into this problem. In conclusion, the affirmative action contract needs to be reviewed, and the goals must be met, and not to be allowed to be overlooked to the point of just attending meetings after meetings and getting nothing done. We need to look at the meetings, the jobs, goals, and outcomes within the city to help with getting persons with disabilities minorities who are afforded an opportunity to apply and receive a job based on their own qualifications. To have an Homestead and economic disparity study done so that the goals can be reproduced and set forth responsibilities of meeting these goals of both affordable and accessible housing and jobs within the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Ellie Pepper.
Good evening, City Council, Madam President, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity, oh, my name's Ellie Pepper. I live in the City of Schenectady. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the consolidated plan. I'd like to comment on funding for housing counseling at Better Neighborhoods, Inc., also known as BNI. As many of you already know, I managed the housing counseling program at BNI for five and a half years. BNI has a HUD-approved housing counseling program that provides one-on-one pre-purchase counseling, post-purchase counseling, and foreclosure prevention counseling. Through counseling and education, they assist first-time homebuyers by ensuring that they are fully prepared for homeownership, receive the most affordable mortgage product, and avoid the pitfalls that have forced many homeowners into foreclosure. BNI employs homeownership advisors that are highly trained and certified by NeighborWorks America in pre-purchase counseling and education. They participate in ongoing training through NeighborWorks America to maintain that certification. Currently, I work for the Empire Justice Center as the Regional Coordinator for the Northeast and Hudson Valley Region under the New York State Attorney General's Home Ownership Protection Program. Across New York State, I see the effects of the foreclosure crisis. One thing that is abundantly clear, homeowners that participate in pre-purchase education and counseling since 2005 are not the ones in danger of losing their home. Just last month, NeighborWorks America published a study that found homeowners are one-third less likely to fall behind 90 days or more on their mortgage after receiving pre-purchase counseling provided by NeighborWorks network organizations. This applies equally to first-time homebuyers and repeat buyers. According to the Home Ownership Preservation Foundation, a study done in 2005 by William C. Apgar of the Joint Center for Housing Studies at Harvard, a foreclosure could impose direct costs on local government agencies totaling more than $34,000. It's more important than ever for the prevention of foreclosure, to stop abandonment and vacant buildings in the city. Last year, $60,000 was included in the consolidated plan for housing counseling. Unfortunately, only a little more than $30,000 of that is accessible to BNI. The remainder of the unused funds are home dollars, which can only be used to cover the specific project-related costs. This means BNI can only draw those funds when a counseled client purchases a home that was rehabbed or built with home dollars, and they can only draw for the time spent with the actual buyer, not all the potential buyers of that property who were ultimately not mortgageable or who changed their minds to purchase a different house. This year, the total proposed is $40,000, $10,000 of which is home dollars, that can only be used as just described. I urge you to increase the amount of non-home funds in support of this cost-effective, important program. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Phil Grigsby.
Members of the Council, President King, Mayor McCarthy, I'm Reverend Phil Grigsby, city resident, Director of the Schenectady Inter-City Ministry. Appreciate the opportunity to talk on the consolidated plan this evening. There are always difficult choices before you, and so it's always a challenging time. I want to thank you for behalf of the application that we put in for the summer lunch program for the continuation of support. It's great to work in partnership with the city and also support the work that's in the plan for the other parks that enhance all the programs in some of the parks this summer, so I appreciate the continuing partnership on that. Secondly, want to, as was indicated in the paper, ask your consideration of continuing support for the security deposit program that we have. There was a hiatus in the program because we were transitioning it from the Human Rights Commission to the Community Action Program, but now the program is in full operation and working in partnership with the Emergency Food and Shelter Funds, which is a great help during this particular time of year. We anticipate the funds will be expended by the end of June, and so if they are not reallocated, there will be no funds at this time next year, so I ask your consideration. Third, wanted to talk about the Capital District Community Loan Fund, as has been indicated. I have known about the loan fund for many years, and it's a very strong operation. Some of us have talked on and off over the years about having some kind of satellite office here, and now it seems an appropriately appropriate time because the SLDC, Schenectady Development Corporation is not operating at this point, and so there is a real need for the kind of work that the loan fund does. They have gotten partnership and other in-kind support, and for a very modest amount of $20,000, really looking at making at least six business loans, four residential or home repair loans, at least four community development loans to nonprofit groups, meeting with at least 50 Schenectady residents, provide information and technical assistance in starting a small business, helping create or retain eight jobs, and securing new socially concerned investors. So it really seems a very modest, one-time investment that has a great payoff, and before you are just some of the work that they do that you may be familiar with, but I certainly recommend them highly. Again, it's a challenging environment. The budget is never what one would expect, but I would hope that there could be a way to secure support for the loan fund in this cycle. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mark Chairs.
Good evening. My name's Mark Chairs. I'm the Executive Director of the Hamilton Hill Art Center. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. On behalf of the Hamilton Hill Art Center, I want to thank the Mayor and the Department of Development for recommending funding for our agency, and respectfully request and hope that the council law signs off on that request. We, it's especially appreciated, given the challenging financial situation which we find ourselves. One thing we want to be clear about is that we do not view this funding, or any funding received, as a gift. Rather, we view it as an investment by the city, which carries with it the responsibility to use it to improve the city in some way. How do we plan to do that? We plan to do that by living up to our mission statement, which reads as follows. The Hamilton Hill Art Center exists to ensure the healthy development and academic success of youth by promoting their involvement in the visual, performing, and English language arts, as well as a unique perspective on African and African-American art. What this means simply is that we're going to strengthen our existing culturally-based arts programs, which people are very familiar with, the African drumming, dancing, and steel drumming. We're going to be expanding our visual arts program. Towards that end, we've recently received some invaluable assistance from Union Colleges' Kenny Center, including the services of several Union College student volunteers. In fact, one will be introducing our students to a new concept called visual thinking strategies, and I'll give you a handout when I'm done. We'll also be expanding our music program. We recently hosted the first of several workshops in partnership with the Blues Network of the Capital District, and we will be rolling out a band program in the fall, and it's going to be led by a well-respected musical educator in the area. With respect to the English language arts, which we recently added to our mission, we will be implementing a literacy program sometime between fall and January of 2014, and we did that for two simple reasons. First, you cannot participate in or fully appreciate the arts without a good grasp, a really good grasp of the English language. Moreover, if you look at a lot of the information in the media regarding test scores, there's certainly a need there. And in closing, I'd just like to say, while we are grateful for this help, we want to assure the mayor, the city council, and the taxpayers that we are redoubling our efforts to help ourselves, and towards that end, we're going to have several fundraisers. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to make a pitch here, but we'll be having a fundraiser coming up in June, and I've got a handout regarding that, as well as I do some information regarding the visual thinking strategy. Thank you again.
Thank you. Vicki Hurwitz.
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy, City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the proposed consolidated plan budget. And Vicki Hurwitz, a Schenectady resident and an activist concerned about jobs and also about neighborhood revitalization. In its 2010-2014 five-year consolidated plan, the city stated that it would concentrate its anti-poverty strategy on economic development, and that projects would focus, will focus on job creation that will be available to individuals having poverty-level income. This is an excellent economic development strategy. In previous years, economic development activities in the consolidated plan were funded through program income from the Schenectady Local Development Corporation. During the past year, as Reverend Grigsby alluded to, the city closed the Schenectady Local Development Corporation, and in this year's proposed budget, there is no economic development category. Included in the proposals for this year's funding is one from the Community Loan Fund of the Capital District for $20,000, which is anticipated to result in leveraging of over $400,000 in lending capital, which will be used for small business, community development, and residential loans. Technical assistance to small business owners will also be provided. Loan fund customers are primarily women, minorities, and low-income individuals. The loan fund raises its capital from private investors and donors. I feel that the loan funds proposal dovetails very nicely with the city's stated and laudable anti-poverty strategy as presented in the five-year consolidated plan. Business and community development lending will foster job creation and neighborhood revitalization. New private money will be coming into Schenectady. I encourage you to include the loan fund proposal in the final consolidated plan budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Steiner.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Steiner, President of the Chamber of Schenectady County, and I'm speaking on behalf of our more than 1,000 business members here in Schenectady County. The Chamber is an enthusiast of Mayor McCarthy's efforts to invest in our neighborhoods through his housing initiatives, and we embrace his plans for the future. We also strongly believe in the merit of bringing the Community Loan Fund program to Schenectady, as we stated in our support letter for the CDBG grant application. The Community Loan Fund is a nonprofit financial institution with a community development mission. It pools capital from socially concerned donors and investors to facilitate positive social and economic change throughout the capital region, including the city of Schenectady. Its investors enjoy 100% repayment rate as they witness economic activities delivering impressive social returns. The Community Loan Fund has requested very modest funding to assist in an opening of a part-time satellite office here in the city to facilitate more proactive delivery of its lending products, training, and technical assistance to the city residents and community-based groups. Metroplex has agreed to assist in the efforts by offering rent-free space. The $20,000 requested by the Community Loan Fund will leverage more than $400,000 in services and funding for city residents and businesses. The organization is offering to provide local, accessible, economic development services for low- and moderate-income persons and neighborhoods, and it has a proven track record of success in doing so. The Community Loan Fund has made more than 130 loans in Schenectady County, including six residential mortgages and home repair loans. The organization has leveraged more than $20.5 million in Schenectady County and provided training and technical assistance to hundreds of our residents, and has made up start-up and expansion loans to small businesses, nonprofits, providing community services and affordable housing, and individuals for home ownership or repair. They primarily serve, again, women, minority, and low-to-moderate income populations. We realize the city councils have many difficult decisions to make on the CBDG grants. However, if you decide that there's not enough money available to full-fund the available of this program, it still has great merit, and we as the city and the community look forward to alternative funding. Support of this initiative will provide a significant return on investment to the city's Schenectady neighborhoods and businesses. If necessary, the Chamber will partner with the city to obtain the necessary funds from the other sources. On behalf of the Chamber, we encourage your consideration of the CBDG grant to the Community Loan Fund. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Linda Kelleher.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and fellow city residents. My name is Linda Kelleher. I'm a property owner, taxpayer, and resident of the city. Neighborhood associations have in the past, as this year, been encouraged by the city to apply for CDBG funding while continually being passed over for awards. Many of the associations' requests are or have been based on issues or projects identified in the city's 2020 plan. The Bellevue Preservation Association is requesting funds to rehab the two tennis courts in Fairview Park, resurfacing the courts, replacing per-
During this particular time of year, we anticipate the funds will be expended by the end of June, and so if they are not reallocated, there will be no funds at this time next year. So I ask your consideration. A third one to talk about, the Capital District Community Loan Fund, as has been indicated, I have known about the loan fund for many years, and it's a very strong operation. Some of us have talked on and off over the years about having some kind of satellite office here, and now it seems an appropriately appropriate time because the SLDC, Schenectady Development Corporation is not operating at this point, and so there is a real need for the kind of work that the loan fund does. They have gotten partnership and other in-kind support, and for a very modest amount of $20,000, really looking at making at least six business loans, four residential or home repair loans, at least four community development loans to nonprofit groups, meeting with at least 50 Schenectady residents, provide information and technical assistance in starting a small business, helping create or retain eight jobs, and securing new socially concerned investors. So it really seems a very modest one-time investment that has a great payoff, and before you are just some of the work that they do that you may be familiar with, but I certainly recommend them highly. Again, it's a challenging environment. The budget is never what one would expect, but I would hope that there could be a way to secure support for the loan fund in this cycle. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mark Cheers.
Good evening. My name is Mark Cheers. I'm the Executive Director of the Hamilton Hill Arts Center. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. On behalf of the Hamilton Hill Arts Center, I want to thank the Mayor and the Department of Development for recommending funding for our agency, and respectfully request and hope that the council law signs off on that request. It's especially appreciated, given the challenging financial situation which we find ourselves. One thing we want to be clear about is that we do not view this funding, or any funding received, as a gift. Rather, we view it as an investment by the city, which carries with it the responsibility to use it to improve the city in some way. How do we plan to do that? We plan to do that by living up to our mission statement, which reads as follows: The Hamilton Hill Arts Center exists to ensure the healthy development and academic success of youth by promoting their involvement in the visual, performing, and English language arts, as well as a unique perspective on African and African-American art. What this means simply is that we're going to strengthen our existing culturally-based arts programs, which people are very familiar with, the African drumming, dancing, and steel drumming. We're going to be expanding our visual arts program. Towards that end, we've recently received some invaluable assistance from Union Colleges Kenny Center, including the services of several Union College student volunteers. In fact, one will be introducing our students to a new concept called Visual Thinking Strategies, and I'll give you a handout when I'm done. We'll also be expanding our music program. We recently hosted the first of several workshops in partnership with the Blues Network of the Capital District, and we will be rolling out a band program in the fall, and it's going to be led by a well-respected musical educator in the area. With respect to the English language arts, which we recently added to our mission, we will be implementing a literacy program sometime between fall and January of 2014, and we did that for two simple reasons. First, you cannot participate in or fully appreciate the arts without a good grasp, a really good grasp of the English language. Moreover, if you look at a lot of the information in the media regarding test scores, there's certainly a need there. In closing, I'd just like to say, while we are grateful for this help, we want to assure the mayor, the city council, and the taxpayers that we are redoubling our efforts to help ourselves, and towards that end, we're going to have several fundraisers. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to make a pitch here, but we'll be having a fundraiser coming up in June, and I've got a handout regarding that, as well as I do some information regarding the Visual Thinking Strategy. Thank you again.
Thank you. Vicki Hurwitz.
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy, City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the proposed consolidated plan budget. And Vicki Hurwitz is a Schenectady resident and an activist concerned about jobs and also about neighborhood revitalization. In its 2010-2014 five-year consolidated plan, the city stated that it would concentrate its anti-poverty strategy on economic development, and that projects would focus, will focus on job creation that will be available to individuals having poverty-level income. This is an excellent economic development strategy. In previous years, economic development activities in the consolidated plan were funded through program income from the Schenectady Local Development Corporation. During the past year, as Reverend Grigsby alluded to, the city closed the Schenectady Local Development Corporation, and in this year's proposed budget, there is no economic development category. Included in the proposals for this year's funding is one from the Community Loan Fund of the Capital District for $20,000, which is anticipated to result in leveraging of over $400,000 in lending capital, which will be used for small business, community development, and residential loans. Technical assistance to small business owners will also be provided. Loan fund customers are primarily women, minorities, and low-income individuals. The loan fund raises its capital from private investors and donors. I feel that the loan fund's proposal dovetails very nicely with the city's stated and laudable anti-poverty strategy as presented in the five-year consolidated plan. Business and community development lending will foster job creation and neighborhood revitalization. New private money will be coming into Schenectady. I encourage you to include the loan fund proposal in the final consolidated plan budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Steiner.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Steiner, President of the Chamber of Schenectady County, and I'm speaking on behalf of our more than 1,000 business members here in Schenectady County. The Chamber is an enthusiast of Mayor McCarthy's efforts to invest in our neighborhoods through his housing initiatives, and we embrace his plans for the future. We also strongly believe in the merit of bringing the Community Loan Fund program to Schenectady, as we stated in our support letter for the CDBG grant application. The Community Loan Fund is a nonprofit financial institution with a community development mission. It pools capital from socially concerned donors and investors to facilitate positive social and economic change throughout the capital region, including the city of Schenectady. Its investors enjoy 100% repayment rate as they witness economic activities delivering impressive social returns. The Community Loan Fund has requested very modest funding to assist in an opening of a part-time satellite office here in the city to facilitate more proactive delivery of its lending products, training and technical assistance to the city residents and community-based groups. Metroplex has agreed to assist in the efforts by offering rent-free space. The $20,000 requested by the Community Loan Fund will leverage more than $400,000 in services and funding for city residents and businesses. The organization is offering to provide local, accessible economic development services for low- and moderate-income persons and neighborhoods, and it has a proven track record of success in doing so. The Community Loan Fund has made more than 130 loans in Schenectady County, including six residential mortgages and home repair loans. The organization has leveraged more than $20.5 million in Schenectady County and provided training and technical assistance to hundreds of our residents, has made up, made startup and expansion loans to small businesses, nonprofits, providing community services and affordable housing, and individuals for home ownership or repair. They primarily serve, again, women, minority, and low-to-moderate income populations. We realize the city councils have many difficult decisions to make on the CBDG grants. However, if you decide that there's not enough money available to full-fund the available of this program, it still has great merit, and we as a city and the community look forward to alternative funding. Support of this initiative will provide a significant return on investment to the city's Schenectady neighborhood, neighborhoods, and businesses. If necessary, the Chamber will partner with the city to obtain the necessary funds from the other sources. On behalf of the Chamber, we encourage your consideration of the CBDG grant to the Community Loan Fund. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Linda Kelleher.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and fellow city residents. My name is Linda Kelleher. I'm a property owner, taxpayer, and resident of the city. Neighborhood associations have in the past, as this year, been encouraged by the city to apply for CDBG funding while continually being passed over for awards. Many of the associations' requests are or have been based on issues or projects identified in the city's 2020 plan. The Bellevue Preservation Association is requesting funds to rehab the two tennis courts in Fairview Park, resurfacing the courts, replacing perimeter fencing, and marking one court for tennis and the other for pickleball. In addition, the association is asking for supplemental funding to ensure the opening of Hillhurst Pool and continue the programs of 2012 under the supervision of the Girls and Boys Club. The association requesting funds for a new sign that was recently named George Westing House and Bellevue Veterans Park as approved by the council. On a different note, but important issue, jobs continue to be a concern to the residents. The city in its own 2010-2014 consolidated plan specifies that the city of Schenectady will concentrate its anti-poverty strategy on economic development with focus on job creation that will be available to individuals having poverty-level income. Yet, the city's goals for jobs and unemployment have not been met, according to the 2011 CAPER. The CAPER is the performance report the city prepares to show how the money was spent. We can only assume that the 2012 CAPER, due out in the fall, will show the same dismal results of job creation by the city. It has been widely publicized in the national economy that small business is the vehicle for job creation. The Community Loan Fund of the capital region is requesting $20,000 for a variety of initiatives that will enable funding of at least six small business loans, help 50 city residents with information, technical assistance in starting a new business, and help create or retain eight jobs. In addition, the fund will make at least four residential repair loans and will commit four development plans to nonprofits. The Community Loan Fund of the capital region has an impressive history. Incorporated in 1985, it has loaned more than $33 million to 665 community and economic development projects in the region. I urge you to support the requests of the Bellevue Preservation Association, the Community Loan Fund of the capital region. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Neville.
I'm Roy Neville. I'm a city resident on Grand Boulevard. I second the proposals here to have the council support the Capital District Community Loan Fund. It's, that has a track record that makes it worthwhile to support. I invested in that when I lived in Albany years ago, and small investment, but, you know, it was targeted, and they're very reliable. They key in on what businesses, small businesses, need some money for specific projects, and they make it work, so you get your money back, whether it's a grant or a loan. That's a good program to invest in, and I can personally attest to it. On the other item, which Linda Kelleher just mentioned, Bellevue Preservation Committee and the other neighborhood associations do need your help with some funding and attention to the programs that we have. We're getting better organized now to represent neighborhoods, and there are specific needs, and she mentioned several for Bellevue, and I think of some of the money could go for programs there. That would be very helpful from you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak on this public hearing, so I'll declare this public hearing closed and move on to approval of the minutes for March 25th meeting, 2013. Motion to approve, Ms. Porterfield, is there a second? Ms. Brucker, all in favor? Aye. Okay, communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, April 8th, 2013, official. From the mayor, a list of appointments dated Monday, April 8th, 2013, general. From Julia Lewis, a reminder that Bellevue Preservation, Inc., will be meeting on Thursday, April 11th at 7:00 PM at St. Paul's Episcopal Church, Parish Hall, 1911 Fairview Ave. Guest speakers include City Court Judge Matthew Simniski and Community Police Officer Matthew Weakley, who will take questions and listening to neighborhood concerns.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. No? Okay. Then we'll move on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have four people who have signed up. Reverend Phil Grigsby.
Yes, evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak on legislative agenda. I'm Reverend Phil Grigsby with the Schenectady Interstate Ministry and a city resident. Really wanted to just briefly talk about three things on the agenda. I know they're all in consent, but I think they're worth at least a brief word of comment. One, glad to see that Color City Auctions is involved again in the housing process. Had experience with them some time ago, and they're a very solid organization, and glad to see they're involved in helping deal with the issues about housing in our community. Secondly, always glad to see when there are resolutions on churches and tax-exempt property. I know that the more of those can be addressed, the better off we all are. Third, that the Civilian Review Board appointees, glad to see that two additional appointees. As one who was quoted in the article today, and appreciate the article, and appreciate being quoted, but I just want to indicate that with the two appointments tonight, it gives, some may think that the board does not have a quorum, and that's not really the case, because at least it's my understanding of working with the board that state law gets involved, and so existing board members who, their terms may have expired, but they don't have replacements yet, as I understand it, would still be continuing until a time of transition. So as I understand it, with the members that are there tonight, the members that were there before, the board has enough to get going, and I know that a number of groups, ours included, that are working hard on getting replacements for times that terms are up, and appreciate the support that the board has by the council and by the mayor and by the police chief, and look forward to working on some new initiatives with the board. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Linda Kelleher.
Actually, it's more a question. I would like to know where the appointments for the Board of Assessment Review and the Civilian Police Review Board, where do they live?
All right, Joseph Kelleher.
City Council members, good evening. Mr. Mayor, Madam President. My name is Joe Kelleher, and I'm a resident of the city of Schenectady. There are two items that I noticed on the legislative agenda that I just wanted to make a very quick mention of. The first one, which I also understand that Mr. Erickson mentioned in the council committee, was at the last meeting that I spoke at, I had mentioned about a checklist for the rental certificates and for the landlords, and I understand that you brought that up at committee, and I truly appreciate that. Thank you so much. It's, I think it's a fantastic idea and will be extremely helpful to landlords and so that everybody understands what to do. As far as resolution number nine with the Civilian Police Review Board, I'm not familiar with the gentleman that has been appointed, but I can say Robin Granger, who is a member of the Chamber of Commerce, the Vice President, I am familiar with her and her expertise, and I think she's a fantastic appointment for the Civilian Police Review Board. I think she'll do a fantastic job for it, and I certainly give her my full support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jean Carney.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I'd like to speak to you about the rental certificate ordinance. I came to the last meeting because I was very interested in the debate surrounding the rental certificates, and I wanted to hear what was being said, and a couple of things struck me immediately. I heard, I heard a lot of landlords having concerns with the amendments and the changes to the ordinance, but I didn't really hear much recognition or acknowledgement of all of the work that's gone into making those changes, and the changes that are in the ordinance that are really very positive, such as landlords having the ability to do minor electrical and plumbing repairs. I think that that, in the long run, is going to end up saving so much money for those landlords, and I think it's a great addition and change to the ordinance. And I think that some acknowledgement has to be made to all of the people who've worked so hard on this throughout the days, weeks, and months, and come together to make these changes. The other thing that struck me was that there were no tenants here to speak about their concerns or what they like about the changes, what they don't like. And so after the meeting, I decided to go home and do a little investigating, and I talked to some friends of mine who are tenants, and I asked them about the rental certificates and what were their beliefs, what were their thoughts, and the overwhelming response I got was that there is such a measure of security, knowing that there is this rental certificate in place when they move into a house, because they know that it's going to be safe, they know it's going to be up to code, and it's so very important to the tenants to have that. And I think that it's important to keep that in mind as we are moving forward and we are trying to be inviting and welcoming and having attractive properties for people to move into in our city so that we can progress and move forward. And I know that the concerns raised having to do with fees, I checked online various other municipalities to see what their fees were, and they're fairly comparable to what the Schenectady fee is and would remain, and so I think that's also important to mention. So in conclusion, I'd just like to say that I think that this law as amended is a balanced law. It balances the competing interests of the landlords and the tenants, and it is fair, and it is reasonable, and I would urge the council to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to close this portion of the meeting, and we will move to the approval of the legislative agenda, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Okay, Ms. Brucker, seconded by Ms. Perazzo, all in favor? Aye. All right, we have two roll call votes. Want to read the first one?
An ordinance amending Chapter 210, Section 210-8 and Section 210-14, and Chapter 138, Section 138-40, and Section 138-81 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady relative to rental certificates.
You would call the roll?
Ms. Perazzo.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say that, as has already been stated, a lot of work has gone into this. You know, we've gone back and forth. We held it over for a week or two perhaps, in order to make sure that we heard all the concerns that were coming forth, and we're at a point now, I think, that we've come up with something that is going to serve the tenants and the residents, and the landlords as well. I also just want to state that, as we've continually stated, that this is an ongoing dialogue, and as we see things that need to come forth, that may need to be looked at, we need to amend this. That door is not closed, but we have to begin someplace, so we're beginning here. And again, we'll be working with code enforcement and with the law department to be looking at the other concerns that are brought before us. So with that, I vote aye.
Mr. Erickson.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're hearing similar comments from different folks on this issue. This is, this is one of those situations where I don't believe there's a perfect solution, there's not a perfect outcome, but as a council and as the administration and the organized landlord group, SLIC, have all put in a tremendous amount of time on this, and so I think as terms of legislation goes, we've worked this one as hard as we can possibly work it. I'm sure that most people would say it's not perfect, and of course, you know, as Ms. Porterfield said, we're always open to ongoing changes. You know, the checklist has been produced. I'm not sure if it's on the website yet, but I think eventually, hopefully it'll get to the website. Some of the privacy concerns that we had have been addressed. Some of the issues have not been addressed. I mean, there was a debate over the fee and what's the right price, and so I don't think we're ever going to come to an agreement on where some of those things need to be, but there are pros and there's cons. I think one of the things we need to make sure that as a city, we're careful of, and it's something that has been accused at times, and sometimes maybe it's been deserved in terms of fair application of this law, and that everybody is treated fairly, and if there's any situations people feel that they're not being treated fairly, they need to bring it forward and talk to anybody on the council. I'm sure we'll hear, the mayor's office will listen, and correct any situations where people feel that they're not being evaluated fairly. I think that's very important that we do that. But all things considered, I think this is definitely progress, move in the right direction, and so I will vote aye.
Mr. Iggy.
Yes, thank you. It's been stated by councilperson Porterfield and Councilman Erickson, there has been a lot of work that's gone into this from both sides, and I still have some concerns about the fee, which I brought up at committee. I'm not saying, I didn't see any movement in that, this fee, and if there was just a slight movement, I would feel a lot better about it. I still can't get my arms around, even in code, when somebody gets cited, that they pay administrative fee. These people are hired by the city to do their jobs, and their jobs, whether it's to be cited somebody for a code violation or do a rental certificate inspection, they're on the city payroll. So I have a problem with that we're going to charge a fee. I'd like to see that fee reduced. I was asking for $10, just to show some movement there, because ultimately, any cost of doing business, which we all agree this is a cost of doing business, is going to probably fall back on the tenant when all is said and done. You know, landlords and anybody in any kind of business can only absorb so much, then you have to pass it on. So on that, I can't get my arms around this fee and no movement at all in the fee. It may be in par with everybody else around, but, you know, we have fees in Schenectady that aren't in par with other places around, so we can argue both sides of that issue, whether it's fair, not fair, and as Councilman Erickson pointed out, the one thing I don't want to see is anybody being harassed or anything like this. There was maybe a little hint, and it may be innocuous, about Mr. Burgess being gotten a letter last week, and he was one of the vocal people in this. It may be just part of the process, but I don't think his property was in those that were sent the letters to in the first round. We'll let that go, but we have to keep a close eye and make sure that there's no heavy boots coming down on anybody for speaking out. But again, with this fee, I can't reconcile myself to say, I would like to see some movement there, so I'm going to vote no on this. Thank you.
Ms. Brucker.
I'm going to vote yes, and I'd just like to explain my vote, and certainly thank my colleagues, the individuals from SLIC, all the people who did come out and speak to this, certainly our law department who worked tirelessly on this, as well as the mayor's administration codes and codes department. I think in terms of an administrative fee, we do have to keep in mind that, yes, you know, those inspectors go out, and yes, they're paid by the city, but there's also support staff that sometimes with certain landlords and/or tenants have to send out not one, not two, but numerous, 10, 15 notices out to folks, and that does begin to create a cost. And I usually think that when administrative fees are attached to something, it's not attached to that individual who's actually doing the job, it's for all of those individuals that are doing the rest of the backups the department can work. That being said, I think Ms. Carney put it very eloquently. Thank you very much, and thank you for the research that you did, because many times tenants weren't in on this conversation or able to voice, and, you know, perhaps it wasn't the time, but I think it's very telling that if landlords as businesspeople, which certainly I would think they would want the best tenants possible in their housing to make sure that their investment is a sound one, we also have the responsibility of making sure through these laws that tenants feel protected as well. Many of the fires that we've seen in recent years have been in two-family homes, and they're very expensive to take down, and they're very expensive to maintain afterwards. Not only that, they also cause an eyesore within our neighborhoods. So I think this is a very good plan. It's one of the first time I've seen the groups come together so rapidly and so substantially. come together so rapidly, and so substantially. And as Mr. Erickson said, nothing's perfect, except maybe for you sometimes, but I don't really know that, but I think this is a great measure of being able to work together with community groups, with the council, and certainly with the administration, in order to move our city forward, which I think is what everyone wants, as the last conclusion. So I'm through with my rambling, and I vote yes.
Ms. King.
Aye. All right, the ordinance carries then, five to one. And then item number six is the other roll call.
A resolution appointing Mary De La Sandro to the Board of Assessment Review.
Okay, would you call the roll?
Ms. Parrazo. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. As you see, I asked for an amendment to this resolution. Most of us, many people are familiar with Ms. De La Sandro, and I just want to state that she does a number of things in the community, and we're really happy that she, with the expertise that she brings to this board. And in response to a question I think was asked, she resides in the Stockade. So with that, I vote aye.
Mr. Erickson.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain from the vote, not for any reason that, Ms. De La Sandro, I've known her for a number of years, and think very highly of her, but I'm in a current business relationship with her, so I consulted with the Corporation Council, they said it wouldn't necessarily be a conflict of interest, but I thought it might be a gray area, so I will just abstain, just for being on the safe side, so thank you.
Mr. Iggy.
Yes, thank you. I have the same concerns that I brought up in committee, about possible conflicts, and it was, it was clarified by our Corporation Council, but again, I feel that when people go into this, this venue of a, of the review board, to hear their case, they're a little skeptical to start with, and I don't think, there's no question, Ms. De La Sandro's background in real estate is a big plus, no question about that. Do you have to have that to sit on an assessment board? No, but it certainly helps. But again, just the idea that somebody's selling real estate in the city of Schenectady, and they're sitting on the review board to state whether your grievance is credible or not credible, I think there's just a little bit, it could be a little air of, maybe an impropriety, could be thought of by the person, so I would really, it's hard for me to believe that we can't get more people coming forward that would like to sit on this board. It pays $3,100 bucks, you know, it's not a bad little stipend, and maybe people don't realize that, but it's not a bad, bad pay for showing up at these meetings, and to go to the class for it. So I'd like to reach out to people, and tell them, please, submit your resumes to the clerk, or to the city council members, we'll get it to the clerk, because I'd like to see other people, and a more diverse set of people, maybe sitting on the board, because there's a lot of the same people have been on there before. And again, I just, nothing personal against Ms. De La Sandro on this, but I have a problem with a possible conflict, so I'll vote no.
Ms. Brucker.
I vote yes, I think Ms. De La Sandro is an excellent candidate for this board, and I can't remember in my past 14 years, ever having someone with such a strong real estate background, and as being in the field of education, the more education that someone has about a particular subject, is always the ultimate that you would want. I think she's a great candidate. With regards to why people don't come forward, I'm not really sure, because we talk about it a lot, it gets put into the paper. It is a time commitment, it is a commitment of other responsibilities that people have in the city, so once someone does come forward with that type of criteria, and that background and resume, I vote yes.
Ms. King.
I totally agree with Ms. Brucker, and I also vote aye. So that this resolution does carry by a vote of four to one. All right, then I'll close this section of the meeting, and we will move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have five people who've signed up to speak. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor. April is also known as Fair Housing Month, so just wanted to let you know that for affordable and accessible housing, and that April is designated for that month. Also, 35 years ago, the disabled community across the United States walked into each one of the health and educational welfare buildings, that Secretary Conafano was the secretary, and did a sit-in. And for 30 days, they sat into the San Francisco Office Building, and where a lot of the community people brought in, and brought in food, under their purse, under their blankets, whatever it was, to help feed the people, because they were ordered not to be given any food or water. Which led finally to Secretary Conafano to sign the 1973 Vocational Litigation Act, and the provisions within Section 503 and 504. You know, it's really a great avenue of legislation, it happened 35 years ago, and it also led to the movement of having well over a million to 2 million people become disability advocates, and learn to become, from de-independence to independence. And I just hope that someday that this body will be able to work towards that goal. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Sharon Lynn Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, and city council members. Basically, I want to announce events that we have coming up in Mount Pleasant. We have our merchants' breakfast meeting, which will be 7:30 on the 18th, and we do need reservations for that. And we have been getting help with the business end by Mr. Mudavaren, which I appreciate. We have our neighborhood meeting, which will be this Thursday night, at the Faith Deliverance Tabernacle, and our guest speaker will be David Bachelmore, on the Affordable Care Act. We're going to be removing some dead trees on Crane Street on the 19th, we're looking for assistance. On the 20th, a tentative date to plant new trees around Mount Pleasant. And we have Brian Kilcullen, I'm sorry, May-
Sorry, to be announced.
Time and place, I'm sorry, Marion. May 4th, Mount Pleasant Cleanup Day, and we are looking for volunteers and organizations to come on board with us. And Saturday, June 15th, is a tour at my home, garden tour, the Schenectady Seroptimists, and they raise money for scholarships, and other good charitable purposes. And we are doing a tour of St. Adelbert's Cathedral, September 17th, we're going to be giving the time and date of that, as it comes closer, it'll be somewhere between 10:30 and 11:30, so we'll be looking for people to sign on for that. I do want to acknowledge that the city has come forward with some community policing in our, in our consolidated plan, excuse me. We will be looking into this community fund, and we have businesses who have expressed a desire to start up things such as a vegetable chip factory, we have a restaurant diner, which is available for people who are looking to expand their restaurant business into another neighborhood. We have events coming up, which are going to be bringing in people who are going to need eateries, as well as places to stay overnight. Reverend Bookout of the New Bridge Church is planning conferences and tent revivals, and he is expecting that he is going to be bringing in up to 1,000 people, possibly, who are going to need such accommodations. We're looking for people to take office in our new, the Mount Pleasant Merchants Organization, and we have changed the time to a morning, so that those out there listening who haven't been able to come, because their shops are open at 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., can now come at 7:30 in the morning, have some breakfast with us, and learn about the Business Merchants Association of Mount Pleasant. And I want to thank all of you for your support in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Harv, Schenectady. I got two solutions tonight. I want three people remembered in this town, Helen Queenie, James Stamper, and Dr. J. Henderson, because they've done outstanding work in this town, and it's not an easy thing to do, what they did. And that's the way I feel about this. And we need to work on, get these potholes and these sidewalks fixed up, and get the lights put up, where I had mentioned before. It's got to be done, because too many speeders are getting through, and we need these trucks to go around the other way, especially on Broadway, not on Edison Avenue, because before something happens between Vic's Luncheonette and Pete's Auto Shop. We don't want nothing to happen there, because I've seen the trucks come around that corner, and it's pretty dangerous. They should come out that way, but not go in that way, where they're going. So I'd like to see something done. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And Joseph Kelleher.
Thank you once again for allowing me to speak, council members, I appreciate it. A couple of things that are happening around the area, this past weekend, my wife and I had the opportunity to go to the Schenectady Intercity Ministries Food Pantry Benefit Breakfast, which was put on by the Schenectady Rotary Club over at the Ancient Order of Hibernians, a fantastic event, they really did a fantastic job out over there, they took very good care of us. My wife had her one little pancake, and I ate the works, but it was, the food was really great, they took really good care of us, and we really appreciated it. And it was nice to see so many people go out to these types of events. Speaking of these types of events that benefit our community, as I mentioned the last time I was in, excuse me, I'm a member of the American Legion, specifically the Niskiun Post at 1092, seeing as that's the only active home for veterans, veterans home in the, in the area for legionnaires. Every Saturday morning, they have breakfast. Their breakfast is $5 for a huge, huge plate of food. It goes on from 8:00 in the morning until 10:00 in the morning, 10:30 in the morning, and every Saturday, and in fact, this weekend, they asked me to cook, so please, please, if you decide to come out, I'm doing my best, really. Inasmuch, they have Stars for Our Troops, which is where folks come in and bring in retired flags. The flag stars are cut out, they use the, usually the three-foot by five-foot embroidered flags. Those stars are cut out, and they're put in small pouches, and I apologize, I didn't bring any in with me to show you. But they use the embroidered flags, because when they give these flags, these stars rather, to military members, whether an active veteran, an active member of the service, or a veteran, they can put them in their pocket, and know that that star, once hung in the flag, and there's, and supported them, and in support of our country, and they can feel it there when they reach inside their pocket. We're going to be doing that over at the American Legion on Thursday, the 18th, along with a potluck, and if anybody would like to drop off flags, or donate something to that, to help with that, it's truly appreciated. The two other things I wanted to mention very quickly, as I see only have 30 seconds left, the Schenectady United Neighborhoods does have a Facebook page, all the events that you've heard about, that's the neighborhoods put on, I make sure get posted on that Facebook page when they send it over to me. People can find the Schenectady United Neighborhoods on Facebook, and get those events. And also, I understand that U-Matter Schenectady has been doing a fantastic job, and they've met over 50% of their goals so far, and I want to accredit them, and give them all the accolades that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
Good evening, and well, my name is Mary McLean, I live in the city. Tonight, I want to say thank you to Mr. Don Rittner, for all his work during the filming of the movie, A Place Beyond the Pines. Mr. Rittner worked very closely with the director, until the completion of the film. Mr. Rittner is a very creative individual. Everything he does is a success. With the release of the movie, he has helped put Schenectady on the map in a very positive way. I for one, look forward to his next project. Thank you, Mr. Rittner.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we will move to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Parrazo.
Just a couple of things. I want to remind people that open burning in the city is actually illegal. I know that we had some legislation come before the council last year, that amended some of the language with regard to open burning, but it still is illegal to have open burning in the city of Schenectady. So even contained fires and fire pits are not allowed. We're also in a very, very dry period right now, there's been brush fires, you know, in neighboring counties, so certainly charcoal cooking, gas grill cooking is all fine, make sure that grills are not on your porch. We've had several houses burned down just in the past year, from grills being on people's porches, so just a little reminder about that. I also want to tell people that got this question a lot, I worked at the Green Market this Sunday, my manager's shift, and a lot of questions about when is the market going outside? So, and the market goes outside in May, and, which is good, because I'm glad we weren't outside in April, because so far it's not been so very nice. Getting back to the, I also want to thank everyone who came out to speak, and give us information on the CDBG funding. It's a very big decision that the council makes, and often when we have public hearings, people don't utilize the time to come out and weigh in, so I really appreciate the amount of people that came out, and would like to see that for all of our public hearings. Getting back to the amendments that were passed tonight, I agree with my colleagues, that I don't think it's a perfect solution for everyone, but I think it's a fair solution. I can say that I have been talking with SLIC before they were really even slick, it was about 10 people at the Niskiun Library before I was even elected official, and what they've done momentum-wise to grow, and I've been very supportive of them, meeting after meeting, is wonderful. And I do want to point out one thing, because I know they certainly didn't get everything they asked for, but they got some things I don't think they were expecting to get either. But my experience with talking to Mr. Schilling, after a meeting that I attended months ago, the plumbing and electrical repairs came up in that meeting, and I talked to Eric about it, just assuming that the answer was going to be no, and he was like, well, let's talk about it, what does it look like? So I think Mr. Schilling is very willing to keep the talk open, I know that there's been some undercurrent, that once this is passed, or it has passed now, once this is passed, that's it, it's done, but I don't think that's the truth. I had a very lengthy discussion with a gentleman the other night about the fees related to when a certificate needs a reinspection, do, you know, they have a certificate in place, but yet, somebody calls, and, you know, maybe the fire alarm is missing, or the smoke detector is missing, because the tenant has removed it, and I think we need to look at that fee a little bit, and start to talk about what that looks like. But I think the thing I'm most excited about is that Mr. Schilling is really open, I think this sets a benchmark, and now we're open to move forward with recognizing our landlords that are reputable landlords, and giving them a different recognition, and some more concessions. So I think this is a good first step, we'll continue to move forward. And lastly, I have been talking with legal for several months about reinstating the Housing Standards Review Board, and those changes are in place, and that legislation is more or less ready to bring to the council for discussion, but I just wanted to bite off one bite at a time. So that's just another thing that we've heard, another thing that we're willing to put in place. We had a lot of board appointments to go through, and now that those have passed, we will be looking at that, I'll be putting that on the agenda for Monday. So just a little update there, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Iggy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to announce there's a neighborhood cleanup this Saturday for Goose Hill. And they're going to meet at Marty's Hardware at 8:30. Bags will be supplied, but bring gloves. And if you have anything, you know, a stick with a nail in it or something to pick up trash. It's always a good thing to start cleaning up neighborhoods, so if you could support that. I think it's from 8:30 till around 12 is what Mike is planning on. So it'll be a good thing. And also, I believe Muni is opening tomorrow, Mayor. And you're going to have the first drive, correct? Well, that's what I was going to mention to you. There's no mulligans going to be taken tomorrow. So there's going to be a lot of eyes on you. Don't tee too high, don't tee too low. Make sure you take a nice level swing and hit that ball straight down the fairway. Because we have to kick it off with a big bang. But I'm really looking forward to seeing what Matt Daly's going to have to offer us with the golf course. That is truly a great asset that we have here in Schenectady, the, you know, municipal golf course. So it's good. I'm glad they're going to open. And that's always good. Bring some revenue into the city. And the mayor kicking it off tomorrow should be a good thing. So good luck.
Okay, Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to acknowledge the passing of Dr. Jesse Henderson, who was a physician in this city. He was the first African-American physician in this city. And he served the public here, everyone, for 37 years over on Union Street. You know, he was just a really, a really nice man. He was one of those down-to-earth kind of people that, you know, he was a doctor, but you know, he never like held himself in such a high esteem. He just was, you know, interacted with many people, and certainly we'll miss him in our community. I'd also like to thank all the people that came down today to talk about the CDBG and giving their input. And I would like to lend my voice of support to the, for the Community Development Loan Fund. It is an organization that I am familiar with, that does great work in Schenectady and has done before even moving to Schenectady. You know, I have to say that I've been part of the meetings that were going on. And with what we're trying to do in Schenectady with the economic development, I think they would be a wonderful asset to work with the small business owners. To this day, small businesses owners still go to the business center looking for assistance on getting their business going. So that would just, you know, that would be the help that they would need. There was a question raised about one of the appointments to the police review board, and that person also lives in the city, Randy McGoo. I just want to make sure that people understand that he is a resident of the city of Schenectady, and was recommended by the Human Rights Commission. Also, there was something about Hillhurst being funded by CDBG, and Hillhurst is in the CDBG budget to be funded. I also want to just mention about the training that we had last week, where the National Crime Prevention Council was here, to do some training called SEPTED, which stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Designs. And there were many people that were present. The mayor and his staff had different people come, and residents, as well as architects, and many people from all throughout the city, so that together we could work on this particular concept. You will be hearing more about it, but it's something that as a community, everyone can work on together in their own community, and work to bring Schenectady even further up and lower the crime rate, and do all the things that are necessary to make this a livable place that people want to come and work with all the other programs that we have. I would like to remind people again, as one of my colleagues did, that if you would like to be on one of the boards, submit your resume to the clerk's office, so that you can be considered, and so that we have a larger pool to look at. And lastly, I'd just like to tell people that, again, that the affirmative action officer will be at our committee meeting on the 15th to give a report for those who have been bringing that issue forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson.
Thank you. Yeah, just quickly, I wanted to talk, the golf course opening tomorrow, I guess, so that's, I think that's really good news. And something I wanted to note, you know, we, tonight, we approved the contract for Northeast Turf, which is the company that does a lot of the maintenance on the golf course. And we had some discussion on the specifications and how we bid that, and I had some thoughts on that as well. But it was nice to hear that Carl Olson, the city, did some additional negotiations. He was able to save a considerable amount of money on this contract from what we've had in the past. And I think going forward, you know, there's bound to be some changes in the golf course in terms of the watering systems and things like that. So I think we might have some additional savings going forward when we make some capital investments there, when that does come around several, you know, maybe a couple of years in the future. So the other thing, we had a public hearing on the fees. And we'll have more discussions in committee. But I think, you know, just from a basic standpoint, we need to make sure that our fees are structured in a way that gives the greatest benefit to citizens of the city, and not necessarily people who don't live in the city. And we like everybody, we want people to come to our golf course and play. But I want to make sure that the discounts and the credits are for city residents, not non-city residents. I think that's something we want to keep in mind. And lastly, Mary McLean mentioned Don Ritner. And by all means, you know, I'm a fan of Don. He's an interesting character. He's done a lot of good things for the city, and for our community as a whole, with his involvement with the Pines movie. I was involved last year with the Fireball Run, Search for Missing Children, a lot of events, we were dealing with arts. And so Don is an interesting guy, but he's done a lot of great things for the city. So thank Mary for bringing, mentioning Don, and again, I'll send a thank you as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of quick things. Again, Vince reminded people, the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association's going to do a neighborhood cleanup this Saturday, 8:30 in the morning. Appreciate the efforts there. We have all the efforts in Mount Pleasant. Bellevue's doing things. Woodlawn has done a number of things, raising money for the restoration of the park and some cleanup activities there. So there's a lot of good things happening here. If people have time, want to come out on a morning, spend a little bit effort to make your neighborhood better, we appreciate that. The golf course, there was a letter that had gone around questioning the appointment of Doug Sales. The letter misstated that Mr. Sales was appointed to the Board of Assessment Review. He was actually my nominee, submitted to the council for the Golf Course Advisory Board. That board by statute requires non-residents to be appointed to it to represent those individuals who play golf, who don't live in the city. So that letter was distorted, it was factually incorrect, and it just created some confusion. Mr. Sales does currently live in Ballston Spa or Ballston Lake. He is in the process of closing on a house in the city of Schenectady, so that he's been impressed with the turnaround here, things that are happening here. And his role on that board will shift from a non-resident to a resident in the very near future. And for Mr. Riggi, I appreciate your consideration. Last year, I will tell you, we opened the golf course. My best drive was opening day. I should have stopped after that, and it just went downhill throughout the season. So I will try and improve upon that this year. But I appreciate all the things the council did, and again, SLIC and their participation in this ongoing discussion. We all want to make the community better, want to make the housing stock better. And it's a long-term investment, a long-term commitment of everyone that's here. And it's, we just have to do those incremental things every day to keep working to make things better. Thank you, Madam President.
And I just have one announcement. On Tuesday, April 16th, we are going to be hosting a special day for Realtors. The purpose of this event is to change the misperception of Schenectady. The city mission ambassadors will be opening the doors over at Proctor's, where there'll be a red carpet. The marquee at Proctor's and Erie Boulevard will welcome the Realtors. In addition, different heads of different companies have been invited. Banks are going to be setting up tables. Neighborhoods will be setting up storyboards. The program will actually start in the GE Theater with a performance of Chorus Line from the Schenectady High School students. And then there will be a number of speakers, including the mayor, Ray Gillan, Philip Morris, and Larry Spring. And then folks will then be taken on an escorted bus tour of the city highlights. So this is just designed to get the Realtors, particularly the people who may have not been in Schenectady in a while, to come in and see the good things that are happening here. And that can only, again, enhance homeownership. I also want to thank everybody who spoke tonight and congratulate you. You all stayed within three minutes. That was very nice. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Riggi, second Mr. Erickson, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.